It appears that the first thing we would have to do is go into non-public work session? Is that the case? Okay. We'll need to go into a non-public work session in accordance with RSA 91 dash A colon 3, Roman numeral 2, or B, hiring, and L, legal correspondence. Is there a motion?
So moved.
All right, Mary Ann moves. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Neil's second. John, your vote?
Aye.
Nope, no discussion. Mary Ann?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Zach?
Aye.
Bill, aye. Uh, we're non-public. All right, so we're running on public and, um, we're going to, well, first of all, just for everyone else, um, just a reminder that the signature file is in town for all the board members. And you'll also need to come in to sign the, um, the tax rate.
Tax warrant, yeah.
So that's... Yep.
You get bills out.
Okay. And the second item, um, Josie Girona, Ewing, Bob Clay, and supervisors of the checklist regarding CARES Act reimbursement. And, um, we've seen the request from, from Josie regarding, um, you know, the item to pay herself and the staff that did the election, um, certain amount that would be covered by CARES, um, uh, grant. And Secretary of State, we also seized information from the Secretary of State regarding, you know, how that, um, how those monies are requested and what they're used for. So, um, Josie, I'm thinking, could you describe, you know, what your request is for and...
Yep. So, um, thanks, thanks, Bill. And Bob, please feel free to cover any gaps if I have any. Um, so our last meeting, uh, when we last taught, Bob and I last spoke to the board, um, those details haven't changed. The grant money, part of the grant money is still going to cover, um, significant expenses that were out, you know, out of the ordinary for us. Um, for example, the additional postage for absentee ballots, um, any additional election supplies, as well as, uh, to cover the costs of having additional poll workers. Um, so if you look at the November 16th letter, um, that I submitted to the board, uh, that would be, for example, postage would be $815 roughly. So postage right now, it's, um, 65 cents exactly to mail out an absentee ballot. So I just multiplied, uh, the amount of absentee ballots, um, with that number. Election supplies would be $435.30. And then, uh, we had, oh, I don't know if I have the number exactly in front of me, but we had, um, many more poll workers than we've had to have in the past, had to have in the past. Um, so 2,300 would be allocated to cover that expense. And then part of the grant, um, the reimbursement, uh, refund, or funding is designed to also, um, be allocated to election workers, um, or I should say election officials like myself, uh, my deputy, Bob, the moderator, assistant moderator, and the supervisors of the checklist, uh, for the additional work we did prior to the election day. Um, because, you know, compared to the past this year, uh, due to the pandemic, naturally, we did more work. Um, you know, and just to ensure that, uh, you know, we had a fair and safe election season, um, in our community. Um, so we're thankful that the state is recognizing that clerks and, um, election officials across the state, um, you know, recognizing the challenges we faced, um, and the hard work we did. And, um, Bob, I mean, do you have anything else to add, Bob, or any of the supervisors?
I have a lot to add.
Oh, I know you do.
Um, I have a letter, I was gonna go to the selectmen's meeting, I couldn't get in down there, so I have the letter in my hand, I'll read it to you. Um, to the select board of the town of Plymouth, thank you for taking the time to speak with me about the election process and the extraordinary amount of time and effort put in by the moderator, the assistant moderator, supervisors of the checklist, and town clerks. Um, assistant moderator, I had, I swore Quentin in as an assistant moderator, and he attended all of the meetings that I'm gonna be talking about here in a few minutes also. Um, I'd like to start by stressing that the intent of the CARES Act from the Secretary of State, which we already talked about, was to reimburse election expenses. Um, your election officials spent an unbelievable amount of time making the September primary and the November general election happen without a hitch, putting themselves at risk, not spreading COVID-19. On those two days, we had over 3,000 voters, as well as 1,500 absentee ballots to process. Here is the list of most of the additional work done by us. To put it all down on paper was nearly impossible. But meeting with the Secretary of State and the Attorney General's office, separate meetings for town clerk, supervisors of the checklist, and moderators. Uh, the moderator, assistant moderator, we had 10 meetings, seven of which, which were one hour, and three which were two hours. Uh, supervisors of the checklist, same thing, they had to do it also. Town clerk had to do a similar thing. Um, all election officials, with all of us being there doing different things, set up the polls before the election, uh, day, uh, early, the day before, or two, or three, four days before. Two hours each of those two days, meeting to plan the election and how to set up and deal with all the contingencies. We had two meetings that were two hours long for that. The process of absentee ballots and resi, and registration of new voters in front of the town hall at P, and at PSU. Supervisors, town clerk, and myself were even at some of those meetings in order to, uh, process that. It's 10 days, uh, three hours each. Training new ballot clerks to replace the ballot clerks who could not work due to COVID-19 and needed for the turnout. Uh, my wife spent 10 hours on that, and then two or three of us spent two hours at the primary on that. Uh, pre-process absentee ballots, two days, three hours each time, and one was on a Saturday and one was on a holiday. Uh, runtime for the additional forms required for the absentee process, two hours, um, at the town hall, running those off. When all was said and done, the cumulative total of the extra time was well over 225 hours by the election officials, without the extra time put in by the town clerk. That's not including Josie's extra time. This election would not have been a success, as successful without the dedication of the town clerk and her assistant. She spent an extraordinary amount of time sourcing new ballot clerks, over 50, for three shifts, many more than any prior election, as well as all the other items listed in this letter. I've worked at the polls for 50 years. I started as a ballot clerk at the age of 17. Supervisor of the checklist, I did that for three years. I've been a moderator, and never in those 50 years have I seen such a dedicated team run a successful election under such unbelievable conditions. They all deserve your support for their effort, doing the thankless job that most people in the town don't even understand.
Thank you, Bob.
Yeah, thank you, Bob. All right, um, any, anyone else from the...
Supervisors asked, asked me to speak for them, so they were, they, uh, were involved in the writing of that letter.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Bob.
Bill, I also submitted a letter. Um, was the board able to read that? I submitted quite a few letters, um, but this would be the November 19th.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Bob, we know you love Plymouth.
Yes, he does.
My heart and soul is here. I've had opportunities to move out of town, and I haven't done it, and I continue to pay our taxes. And I heard you say the tax bills are going out, and dying to find out what the rate is.
I hope you don't die.
Oh, ho, ho.
Yeah, I bet.
No, no.
So, um...
I meant that positively.
I, okay, that's good.
Um, any discussion from the board? Or observations or opinions?
Yeah, I, I think we need to congratulate Bob and Josie and, and, and the supervisors and, and the whole crew.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was, um, it was definitely a hard election year. Um, I don't even think I was prepared at first. Um, I, I don't think any of us knew how difficult this election season would be, but I think we, um, I don't know what other communities went through, but I think us being a college town, um, you know, we worked really hard. And, um, honestly, the support of the board really helped us as well. And, um, on election day, I can't even... Yeah, I, I think for a week Ross heard me just thanking, from the bottom of my heart, that the board did such a great job to support us on that day, both days, the primary and the general election.
Just another comment on our supervisors, I know that they end up calling the state many times, uh, asking questions. And when they hear back from the state saying, wow, if every town would run things the way you do, uh, you know, there'd be a lot less problems in the state. And also, the Attorney General's, uh, representative, who was at the polls both of the elections, just couldn't believe how smooth and efficient our operation ran compared to many others in the state. We did it, and we did it right.
Okay.
Do we need a motion to accept this? Is that, is that where we're, where we're at?
Um, yeah, I think at this point, um, well, first of all, we don't have the money yet to dispense, so while we're still waiting on, on that from the state.
Yep.
So there's, um, there's no real hurry, actually, and I'm wondering if, um, if we can put, put this off until our next board meeting?
Yeah, I mean, if there's not actually any money to accept, uh, at the moment, then it's, it would all be conceptual, right?
True.
And, um... Does it make sense to approve it pending the grant money coming in? And then not having to deal with it again on another meeting?
It's, um... I'm, I'm open for any eventuality, but I, I would defer, I mean, I, I think we could probably, you know, wait until our next meeting to, you know, wrap it up, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't see how we, we could do that without knowing the monies to disperse.
We do have a figure, actually. Uh, we're getting exactly $11,535.45, um, which I have sent, I have signed the paperwork. The state is just working on, uh, sending the money to towns. Um, I know other communities have already met, um, and have, you know, are approving, um, how money is going to be spent. By respect, if the board would like to wait, that's fine. Yeah.
I, I know that Ann Abar, the Finance Director, asked for an accounting of hours, um, if Bob would be willing to send what he just read to Ann and the board, so that they could look at it.
Yep.
I'd just like to offer a couple of comments. Um, again, we don't have the money yet, so I think holding off for the next meeting is perfect. Um, I would also like to, uh, contact other communities, because I know that there are other communities that are getting funding, and see how they're dispersing their funds. Um, there are, they did a great job for the elections, they know that, I know that, everyone knows that. Um, however, there are more people who worked the elections than just the election officials that you're seeing. Um, there are several departments that work to make everything run as smooth as it did, um, and just possibly some future recognition for those individuals as well. Um, so if you wouldn't mind waiting, I'd like to just make a few phone calls, um, and to other communities and see how they're handling this as well.
And I'm, I'm sorry, I am going to quickly, um, just add that this grant was designed by watching, observing town clerks. Um, and the amount of time to compile absentee ballots, as well as to enter data into the system. Um, so all the work, so this grant essentially is designed to, part of it, I should say, not all of it, is designed to, um, cover, um, to, to give stipends to individuals, to election officials, actually, who worked prior to election day, um, to cover the additional work required of them. It did not include, um, you know, other individuals for their work on election day.
Okay, and I, I agree that there is, um, that understanding, Josie. Um, however, there are other grants out there that we could have maybe gotten. Um, there are other communities that have colleges in their town, um, and one I already spoke to, who is not dispersing anything to their elected officials. Um, and I'm not saying you guys aren't gonna get anything, I'm not making any recommendation right now. I'm just saying we need to make sure that we do the research that we need to, to make sure that, that we're being fair.
Quite honestly, I don't give a darn what another town does. I know what we did, and I know the effort that was put in by an unbelievable crew, and I take exception to that. I really do.
Yeah.
I, I'd like to make, make a point. Uh, from my observations, uh, I, I was really impressed with the fact that, that Bob and Josie and the supervisors went to great lengths to make sure that every person was able to vote, and that handicapped people were given consideration.
Yeah. Thanks, Neil.
Zach, any comments? You were there most of the day, out in the cold.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the officials did a, a great job, uh, and, uh, in general, I, I think that, um, making sure that they get, uh, you know, stipends and compensation for the effort they did makes a lot of sense. Um, I, as someone who deals with, uh, with dollars and cents a lot, I also, uh, respect Ann's desire to just confirm that, uh, that's what is proposed here isn't, isn't wildly different than what other communities do in terms of how they distribute the funds. Um, you know, I, and I don't, I don't know exactly what that looks like, but we have to wait for a few weeks before we actually receive these dollars anyway. Uh, so I, I think that gives Ann the time to make a phone call or two, to just confirm that we're not doing anything uh, strange here, in terms of the exact allocations of dollars. Uh, but, uh, from my perspective, I see no reason why, you know, in, in a couple of weeks, when the money is here, we, we're not gonna vote this plan through.
Um, you know, I can say that I've talked to some clerks, um, the hooks at town clerk Todd, um, the Bo, uh, town clerk, as well as, um, you know, and the Town Clerks Association is planning to meet with the Attorney General's Office, because unfortunately, there are communities, not the ones I've spoken to, uh, where they're not willing to, uh, give any money to their election officials. And the Attorney General's, or excuse me, the Secretary of State's office is aware that, um, this may be an issue, because, um, ultimately, the board does have a say, selectmen have a say on how, uh, the money can be spent. But I think it's important that, uh, these decisions are also based on the expertise of election officials, as well as the work we did. Um, a lot of the work is done before election day. You know, election day is extremely difficult. Um, but, you know, for example, uh, many weeks I put in up to 15 hours additional, of additional work, um, into preparing for the elections. Um, there were many times I stayed at work until 9:00 PM at night, or I brought my work home, um, you know, and I... Yeah, so I, I don't, you're gonna find some communities where they're probably gonna give their town clerk $50, or their moderator $50. It's really on an individual basis. Um, and so I hope that, you know, Plymouth, um, you know, stands out and wants to recognize our work as elections officials. And, um, you know, again, I think the Secretary of State's Office, if they can provide, uh, more guidance, or get more involved, um, to support election officials, I think that would be great as well.
Okay. Well, thanks, Josie. Um, so it appears that we'll, we'll we'll at least, uh, table this until our next elec, you know, next election. No, I'll...
You may not have any of us around for the next election.
The next presidential, yeah. No, so, um, yeah, our, our, our next meeting of the board. Okay?
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate, yeah, I appreciate your input, and thanks, Bob, for putting that together, and, um, that will be very helpful.
Okay.
Yep.
Yep.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, see ya. All right.
We do have Scott Weeden here as well.
Yeah, I saw, I see Scott. Um, Scott, do you want to provide us, um, COVID-19 update on the illness policy?
Sure. So, when the, um, governor issued, um, emergency order number 72, there was travel guidance that was included in that emergency order. And what we did was, or what Ann did, was to take the COVID illness policy that was approved at the previous meeting, and updated it to include the new travel guidance, which is that if someone travels internationally on a cruise line or outside of New England, they have the option to test out of quarantine with a negative COVID test on day seven of the quarantine. And it must be a PCR test. So, we've updated that language, that it's not just quarantining for 14 days. The other option is what I just mentioned.
Okay. All right, let's see, that's number nine of the, uh, policy.
Scott, I have an additional change, I'm sorry, Chairman. Um, on the back, which is page two of the, I'm gonna make sure that these are numbered, so that we're not falling. Um, on page two, the last bullet, nine's last bullet, which is on page two, does not allow, uh, a person to be released early from their 14-day quarantine. So that just needs to be either removed, if you would suggest, or updated. It may not need to be there.
Yeah, I would suggest we remove that and just have the one section on quarantining based on travel guidance.
We just missed that when we were updating.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Scott. Anything, anything else on, on that item, or...
Um, not on the policy. I can give you some other updates if you wish.
I don't wanna hear about it.
Okay, me neither, really.
Yes, please.
Okay, um...
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
Motion to approve this as amended?
Sure. Did, did, did we all hear that? Somebody can make a motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
The travel po, or the policy, illness policy? Uh, okay, who, that was Zach, that so moved? Is there a second?
No, what's the motion?
To accept modifications of the personnel manual to, uh, to include the edits based on the updated guidance.
Thank you.
All right, Zach moved. Who's, is there a second?
Second.
John seconds. Um, Mary Ann, your vote?
Aye.
Zach?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Nice, how it. Thanks, Scott. Now, please provide more information.
Okay, so, um, we, I sent an email this afternoon with regards to the new executive order, 202023, um, which is the 12th extension of the state of emergency, which was issued late on Friday. That will go out for a period of 21 days, taking us to December 11th. But previous to that, um, emergency order 72, which updated emergency order 52, takes us out to January 15th. So both orders are in effect. Um, the executive order out to December 11th, and the emergency order out to January 15th, which, um, I passed along. Um, as of today, um, in Plymouth, and the reporting is, at best, lagging in, in details. As we had 22 active cases reported, nine of those being at the Beckett School, but the Beckett School has been cleared by Public Health. So we can take those nine off of that 22. So our numbers, I think we've mitigated nicely with regards to where our numbers are starting to come back down. Um, and as the college reported last week, and Marlon will give an update later, um, I think their reporting was, was under control as well. There are some things I do wanna ask Marlon about with regards to wastewater testing at the university for early detection of COVID-19. So, when he's on during the regular meeting, I'd like to ask him, because there's several universities that are using this technology from a company out of Boston. Uh, most recent, Norwich University, um, just, um, applied this method of testing wastewater to see if there's any detection of COVID-19. So, I'd like to ask him a little bit about that, and then if he could provide us with the plan for when the students come back on January 25th with regards to testing, quarantining, and isolating. So, I think it'd be nice if we had that update, um, as we move through. Um, the other thing I'm sure most people heard is that the high school closed again today with two positive, uh, COVID students testing, uh, positive. Um, I spoke with Kyla, um, earlier today, and it appears they will be closed until next Monday, the 30th, when they would plan to return from the Thanksgiving break. So, I know they're going through deep cleaning, um, no cases at the elementary school. But that's kind of the updates as of today, um, of what I've been working on. The other piece that's interesting is with regards to the vaccine. I've been working with Spear Memorial Hospital with regards to their HAVs, their hazard vulnerability analysis, and really trying to look at all of their sites on how they'll be able to control any hazards at the pods that they would use for vaccinations. So I've been working specifically with Jack Olmstead in reviewing, um, those HAVs and the policies associated with them, so we can incorporate those into our local emergency operation plan. So I'm in the process of, of that, reviewing those with him. There's, I think, seven different sites that have been identified by Spear that would become pod sites through Public Health. So just an update, um, on that piece as well.
Very good. Thank you, Scott.
So Scott, how many public, how many cases do we have currently active here in Plymouth right now, today?
We have 13 active cases.
Thank you.
And I, you know, I've, I've been in touch with, um, Rachel Umberger, who is the executive director at the Beckett School, and I talk to her twice a week to get assurance that they are continuing to test on a daily basis, and that they have been tested out, um, in negative. Um, New Hampshire Public Health was there last Tuesday, gave them a clean bill of health, and they had no positive cases, and they haven't had any since that date. So, the system is really being taxed and overwhelmed with regards to the reporting and the updates, because if you saw on Channel 9 this morning, they reported that we had 30-some on cases, um, and one new case on Sunday. So, the reporting in this whole process is, is very frustrating at best, and trying to get the realistic numbers for the town of Plymouth. Um, Tommy and I have worked with a couple of businesses this week, um, with regards to reports that masks are not being worn. Um, I visited one of those businesses on Thursday night, and then again, twice on Friday night, and at that point, it was unfounded. The employees, um, were wearing masks while serving individuals. So, um, just a couple of other things we've been working on.
Very good.
Scott, is the requirement for restaurants to take phone numbers still in place?
It is, Mary Ann.
Okay, because I've certainly heard reports where, where people aren't taking names and numbers.
It's voluntary. Yeah, you have to offer it yourself. It's a, generally, like, um, a report, the sitting, you know, counter, that you could put your name and number on. But it's not mandatory.
Oh, it's not? I thought it was.
If it is, um, nobody's requiring it. Yeah.
I know, I know that we have four establishments that are requiring it when you walk in. They have a clipboard, and they'll ask you for contact information. Although you only provide one name and one number, um, they have been doing it. But let me look further into that, because I did think it was required of the establishment.
Yes. I know, I know the common man is doing that, the 104 diner and them. Uh, uh, you know, they, we had information, they're doing the same thing in Concord also, so, before they seat you, they want the information.
Alright. Um, we only have a couple of minutes and we have, we're gonna discuss something about the town meeting?
We can put that off because town meeting's a few months away.
Yeah.
That we wanted to start it earlier rather than later.
Okay.
Yeah, Zach had some information, so we can put that in the next meeting if you want. Move it.
Sure.
I will look, I will look further into that and um, respond back.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I don't wanna throw anybody under the bus, but you know, a couple of uh, you know, places I go into, it's like, yeah, you can put your name there if you want, you know, and, okay, well, anyway.
Yeah, we've had a couple, we've been doing it. Not, we're kind of in a weird spot, but I like the idea. So we've been doing it. Um, some people pushed back. We explained that, hey, do you wanna know if I get sick? Um, we did have one customer who was extremely adamant, um, didn't believe it was a law. And, and I wasn't sure. I'd heard both ways. So that'd be great, Scott. Thank you.
Yes, I will look into that after this meeting and respond.
Okay.